Good. Good evening. The Raritan Township Planning Board is now in session.
A call to order. The notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied by the placing of a notice of this meeting on the bulletin board. Bull building, filing the notice with the township clerk and transmitting the notice to the Hundredan County Democrat, the Courier-News, the Star Ledger, and the Trenton Times.
Very good. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Chairman, Mr. Edward Geddings.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman, Ms. Donna Drews.
Here.
Ms. Robin Fatu.
Here.
Mr. Scott McDade.
Here.
Ms. Judy D. John Domenico.
Here.
Ms. Michelle Capacuri, she asked to be excused tonight. Ms. Lisa Fania.
Here.
Mr. James Miller.
Here.
And Mr. Glenn Sokolowski, and he has to be excused as well.
Okay. Thank you. Before we get further down the agenda, I should mention, we do not have anybody from the public here in our room this evening, just in case we have anybody online. The two public hearings, one for Santana Dharma Foundation, the other for Raritan Junction LLC, have both been postponed from this evening. The date for Raritan Junction will be March 8th at their request. And I do, I am not aware of the Santana new date yet. We're waiting on the attorney to request that date.
He was offered February 22nd. He has not.
He has not responded. Okay, so I just wanted to get that into the record. The first item up we have this evening are the review of minutes from both the December 14th and January 11th meetings. Oh, excuse me. Thank you very much. John, we have Mr. McDade with us tonight after he was put back on the planning board by the Township Committee as committeeman. Does he need to be sworn in?
Do you have the oath for Mr. McDade to sign?
I do. He did sign the oath. I administered him.
Fine.
So he doesn't need to be sworn in.
Sworn.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Dave. Welcome back.
I wanted to make sure he was taken care of. Thank you. Okay, back to the minutes, December 14th. Does anyone have any comments or questions or changes to the December 14th minutes?
Good job, Lisa.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Very thorough. Okay, I have a motion to approve the minutes from December 14th, 2022.
So moved.
Chairman, Mr. Edward Geddings.
Yes.
Vice Chairwoman, Ms. Donna Drews.
Yes.
Ms. Robin Fatu.
Yep.
Actually, you were not present at that meeting, so you will recuse yourself. Abstain, excuse me. Mr. Scott McDade.
Yes.
Ms. Lisa Fania.
Yes.
Ms. Judy D. John Domenico.
Yes.
Mr. James Miller.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next up are the minutes from the January 11th, 2023 meeting, our initial meeting of the year. Does anyone on the board have any comments or questions on this? No, there being none, can I have a motion to approve the minutes for January 11th, 2023?
So moved.
Chairman, Mr. Edward Geddings.
Yes.
Vice Chairwoman, Ms. Donna Drews.
Yes.
Do you want me to read Robin and Scott and have them abstain or just skip through?
They should abstain for the rest.
Okay. Ms. Robin Fatu.
Abstain.
Mr. Scott McDade.
Abstain.
Ms. Lisa Fania.
Abstain.
Ms. Judy D. John Domenico.
Yes.
Mr. James Miller.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Again, there's no one here in the room with us this evening, but if there's anybody online, citizens' privilege, if someone from the public would like to address the planning board on items other than what's on the agenda, now would be the time. Please speak up, give your name. There being nobody online with us.
Nobody from the public online.
From this. Public hearings I've already addressed. So we are quickly down to the resolutions. The first resolution is Resolution 6-2023, which is SAI Group on behalf of Electrify America. We have received those resolution in advance for review. I think there's some questions on this. So Lisa, I know you have a question, so I'll open it up to you first.
Okay, so Mr. Valardo, on page six, item paragraph number nine, at the bottom of the paragraph, it states in that paragraph, "A variance pursuant to the statute is required." Should that have clarification? I just, I'm just asking because I'm, I've never seen that in a resolution. And then also paragraph 10, the last sentence reads, "The applicant should describe the reasoning for the space sizes and how the proposed EVS E will work."
That, 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 that sentence should not be there. The sentence that a variance pursuant to 70C is required should be. So the, the resolution should be adopted without the last sentence of paragraph 10.
I mean, paragraph nine where it says a variance is required, and then the sentence for paragraph 10 where it says the applicant should describe the reasoning, that should be deleted as well?
No, the, the last sentence of paragraph nine is fine, but the last sentence of paragraph 10 should be deleted.
Okay. Maybe I'm misunderstanding, but didn't we grant the variance?
We, we did, but that's, that's stating earlier on that one is required, and then later on, we, we, we grant the variance.
Okay, thank you.
Good catch on 10, though.
It's great. Thank you, Lisa. Did you have anything else?
No, that's all.
Okay, thank you for raising it. Anyone else have any comments on this SAI resolution? I have a motion to approve with the amendment.
So moved.
Chairman, Mr. Edward Geddings.
Yes.
Vice Chairwoman, Ms. Donna Drews.
Yes.
Ms. Lisa Fania.
Yes.
Mr. Scott McDade.
Yes.
Ms. Judy D. John Domenico.
Yes.
Ms. Michelle, she is not here, and Mr. James Miller.
Yes.
Okay. Next up is approval of Resolution 7-2023, which is Blessed Family Holdings LLC. This is approval of this resolution. Does anyone have any comments or questions on this resolution? Okay, there being none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Chairman, Mr. Edward Geddings.
Yes.
Vice Chairwoman, Ms. Donna Drews.
Yes.
Mr. Scott McDade.
Yes.
Ms. Lisa Fania.
Yes.
Ms. Judy D. John Domenico.
Yes.
Ms. Michelle Cafacuri is not here, and Mr. James Miller.
Next item on the agenda is correspondence. I am not aware of any correspondence. Jeff, do you have anything? So we'll move on then to discussions and recommendations, and we actually have two items this evening. Jessica, thanks for joining us remotely tonight because we're going to ask you to comment on these two ordinances, 23-5 and 23-6. So can I open that up to you?
Yeah, absolutely. For the first item, it's in addition to the U.S. Bronze Redevelopment Plan, we are adding 75 Voorhees Corner Road to the redevelopment plan. That is Block 40, Lot 5.01. It was designated as an area in need of redevelopment on June 8th, 2022, if you recall. That was before the planning board shortly before that last year. So it's essentially combining this lot that is on Voorhees Corner Road with the U.S. Bronze site. So there's two sites together to create one whole redevelopment area. Incorporating that lot into the redevelopment plan has essentially some, the same uses of the I-2 industrial zone as well as some uses from the B-2 zone. What we did add to this plan was enhance landscaping standards as well as a restriction for access from Voorhees Corner Road to any proposed development on the site. There would be a provision to allow for emergency access by emergency vehicles only to the rear of the property, but the property would have its primary access on U.S. Route 202. We also propose or are requiring enhanced buffering standards where there's a substantial wooded area along Voorhees Corner Road that would be retained in the future with any redevelopment. And then the areas that don't have existing forested areas would have landscape buffers pursuant to the buffers required within the ordinance for commercial developments adjacent to residential zones. The referral tonight to the planning board is for a review of consistency of this ordinance with the master plan. There is a review within the ordinance, but we do believe it's consistent with several of the goals and objectives within the master plan, primarily to promote additional commercial development within the municipality, to restrict the amount of new single-family residential development, and to promote smart growth policies. So given the location on this busy highway corridor, being within a half a mile of most of the commercial development within the community, I do believe that this is consistent with those goals of, of the master plan and recommend that the planning board at least deem it not inconsistent with the master plan and refer it back to the governing body.
Okay, thank you, Jessica.
You're welcome.
Board have any questions on that review, and I appreciate that. But Jessica?
Just, just, just a question on the principal permitted uses.
Sure.
Item 1C, industrial flex space. Is is that the first time this is going to be introduced in our zoning for flex space?
There are some provisions for flex space within the existing ordinance, but it's a little unclear. There are some requirements. It's not specifically stated, but there are some requirements associated with flex space. So I think it was contemplated by the existing ordinance. It's just not entirely clear whether or not it's permitted.
So that being the case, should it be included?
Yeah, I guess that's why I raise it because hasn't this been an ongoing zoning kind of issue around flex space with warehousing?
Only to the extent that the, the existing ordinance was interpreted by the zoning board to not permit multiple principal uses. But since this is its own ordinance, essentially, it's not, the contemplation was to include uses in the industrial area, but also to allow a host of other uses to encourage redevelopment of the area. So I don't think that it's inappropriate to include it.
So we don't have to worry about inconsistency, since this is now going to allow multiple principal permitted uses and industrial flex space.
Correct. I don't think it adds, I don't think it necessarily adds multiple uses. It just provides that the flex space is now permitted use.
It, it does allow multiple principal uses, and, and the reasoning behind that is to allow for flexibility, that it's a large lot and may not be subdivided into multiple lots to allow for different uses. The consistency review is really with the master plan. The master plan doesn't address that. That was really more of an interpretation of the zoning ordinance by the zoning board. So I don't think that creates any inconsistency with the master plan. There's no requirement that this be consistent with your zoning ordinance.
And just for clarification.
Right, and I, I agree with Ms. Caldwell. To clarify, if you look at it, it says a principal permitted use is an industrial flex space. So if someone came in with an application that contemplated just industrial flex space, that would be just one, one use, industrial flex space.
You're, you're talking to yourself.
Did you hear me or you? No?
I think we lost the end of that, John.
Yeah.
You think it's out of sync?
Yeah.
The ordinance indicates that principal permitted use is industrial. So if someone came to our site, that's used industrial flex space. Do you follow me?
No, you, you broke up very, very badly there. I'm sorry, but can you repeat that? We got every other word, if we were lucky.
Industrial flex space, if an applicant came in, would just be one principal permitted use.
I guess where I, John, I guess where I'm confused is in the past, when it's been industrial flex space typically has individual renters within that complex that are multiple uses. And historically, we've said that that's not permitted in our zone. So I just was concerned that we're introducing a use where if we could go into closed session, I could say this a little easier.
No, I, I think I understand what you're saying, but the governing body has made a determination that in the I-1 industrial and I-2 industrial zone districts, this should be a permitted use rather than requiring a, a, a use variance. Typically, people would come in and say, "I want to do a, a warehouse," which, if you look above, is a permitted use, "and I want to do industrial flex space," which is not a permitted use and had not been a permitted use. Now the governing body is saying, "If someone comes in and wants to have industrial flex space contained within a building, that is one principal permitted use. If someone comes in with a warehouse and doesn't want to do flex space, that's another principal permitted use."
Okay.
I, I think it's just, it's, it's allowing it as a principal permitted use rather than requiring the applicant to go to the zoning board of adjustment. And that determination was made in the Larkin Associates' application that seeking a warehouse with flex space was two principal uses. So my understanding is the governing body is seeking to do away with that and now allow warehouses that essentially have industrial flex space to be a principal permitted use because we're seeing more and more applicants when they're looking to develop warehouses to do it with flex space.
But is, but this is specific to this particular redevelopment area in need of redevelopment, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, that's, that's my understanding.
Specific to this plan only.
Right, so, so the issue, you know, I think what we're raising is, this can be, redevelopment does allow you to essentially spot zone the property. So this is a specific zone just for this area. So it doesn't have to be consistent with your zoning ordinance or other, with the way that you've applied the ordinance to other properties. And in fact, someone who applied under this ordinance wouldn't be able to get a use variance. So the governing body looked to open it up a little bit more to allow for different types of uses on this specific redevelopment area only.
On this redevelopment.
Yes. I, I should be, I should be clear about that, yes, just on this, this area.
Yes.
Okay. Because as you said, John, in the Larkin approval, we were, the board was very specific that flex space was not to be allowed.
Right. In fact, my, my, my understanding is we had, we had an applicant that recently inquired about, about flex space at the King's Pine Warehouse we recently, or King's Court Warehouse we recently approved. And we advised the applicant's attorney that, that flex space was not permitted there. When the applicant's attorney inquired why, we supplied the applicant's attorney with not only the Larkin Associates' opinion, but also there had been a challenge under a Wawa application before the zoning board of adjustment that went not only to the law division but to the appellate division and, and was upheld. So yes, so I, I believe that the governing body in this particular zone is looking to indicate industrial flex space is permitted here to allow that without having to jump through all sorts of hoops.
Right, also referring to the U.S. Bronze Redevelopment District. So that's
Yes.
That, that these permitted uses are principal for the U.S. Bronze Redevelopment District.
That is correct. Along, along with the other uses, including, you know, the offices, assisted living uses in the I-1 and I-2 warehouses and, and now industrial flex space.
Okay, good, good discussion. Anybody else have any questions or comments? No. So to sum this up then, can I have a motion that for the board to approve that this ordinance 23-5 is not inconsistent with the master plan? And the board is approving that this be referred back to the committee with, township committee with approval? I think I got that right.
That's correct.
Okay.
Motion.
Chairman, Mr. Edward Geddings.
Yes.
Vice Chairwoman, Ms. Donna Drews.
Yes.
Ms. Robin Fatu.
Yep.
Mr. Scott McDade.
Yes.
Ms. Lisa Fania.
Yes.
Ms. Judy D. John Domenico.
Yes.
Mr. James Miller.
Yes.
Okay. All right, good. Let's move on to the second ordinance this evening that we're reviewing, ordinance 23-6. This is amended regulations of keeping animals in residential zones. We had seen this previously and made comments and referred it back to the Township Committee, and then certain changes were made to that, and it's been referred back to planning board. Jessica, let me throw it out to you again.
Yeah, so I would just make the same recommendation that the changes weren't significant, significant enough to make this inconsistent with the master plan. And from that respect, I think it was deemed consistent prior, if I'm not mistaken, but there were some more details that, that the board was looking to change. So I don't think anything's changed in the ordinance that would now change it to be inconsistent with the master plan. And of course, the board can review the changes with respect to whether or not they met that your requests.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, there's just some clarification as to what the specific relief is. There was some confusion in the way it was written. And even if you had a setback, a bulk deviation, normally it would require a C variance, but because it was under the limitations, it was interpreted as, as a use variance. So it's, it's actually making it a little easier to understand what exactly the relief is.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Lisa, you had a
No, I was just going to ask Jeff to explain the, the changes to the ordinance because it was already approved. And it had, it's more of a procedural or administrative
Yeah.
application changes than substantive changes from the prior. Yep, variance relief. It's actually saving the applicant money. That's the key, helping the residents out.
Mayor, did you want to add anything? We're good. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, any other questions?
So then the motion is, it's not inconsistent with the master plan?
That is correct. That's
Correct.
Table to be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Chairman, Mr. Edward Geddings.
Yes.
Vice Chairwoman, Ms. Donna Drews.
Yes.
Ms. Robin Fatu.
Yeah.
Mr. Scott McDade.
Yes.
Ms. Lisa Fania.
Yes.
Ms. Judy D. John Domenico.
Yes.
Mr. James Miller.
Yes.
Okay. And, okay, move forward. I, I don't have any chairman to report this evening. Any, anyone from the board have any comments?
I'd like to raise something. So we, Jessica, we have the commercial ordinance review titled 16 Land Development Code Draft that you had prepared a while back. And Jeff had circulated it to, you know, in board members, I guess, on planning board and then Board of Adjustment, of people who would be interested in looking at it. In going through it, it's pretty there's some pretty big changes and, and it, it's some parts of this, especially the cleanup parts of it, alcohol. I, I, the way I view this is it's two sections. One is the changes to the land development commercial zone, and then the rest is kind of those cleanup provisions of all the other things that had been hanging around for a while. And, and my thought, I, I actually had a, it was challenging for me to get through this and kind of understand what direction and why some things were being incorporated. So I'm wondering what the board would think about if we try to schedule a work session and maybe have Jessica come in and just kind of go, go over the parts of the, the changes to the commercial part of it and why the recommendations are the way they are generally and what kind of things were considered. And then maybe Jeff could go over, you know, some of the cleanup stuff, like the solar stuff and some of those other things where we've had definitions that are a problem or other areas, and just kind of highlight it. And then maybe as a board, we can sit and think about what's, you know, what direction do we want to go? Because I just found it challenging to try and provide some real clear thoughts back so that we can get this thing across the finish line. And then concurrently, Councilman King, I guess, is trying to look at, at least I saw it reported, that is there ways that our town can, can help our businesses? And things that can we do along that line? And if that discussion is starting, it may be a really good time to like, take some of that into consideration as we're making some of these changes. You know? Yeah, so that we're, we're
His business initiative is focused on existing businesses. To create, obviously.
Opportunities, but, but things like, you know, our sign regulations can be problematic for existing businesses in a commercial zone. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so sometimes, you know, we inadvertently, you know, so I think there might be some neat opportunities for some synergy as well. So you know, I'm not sure when we could get a work session on, on the schedule. You know, but I didn't know if, if the board
Second meeting in, in March, I've reserved if nothing else happens.
So I don't know what the rest of the board members thinking, you know?
I think it's a great idea.
You know, and I, I, and again, I don't know the, the legal machinations around work sessions, John, but, but since the Board of Adjustment was also asked for some input, could we do a joint work session with them? And are we any legal kind of
No, there's, there's, there's no impediments to doing a joint session with the zoning board of adjustment. It, it's just a matter of noticing it.
Yeah. I thought that would kind of kill, you know, we lost your audio again, John. And we, you know, if Jessica could, it might keep her from having to go before two different groups to kind of present the, the summary to us. And then I think at that point, then we would have the ability then as a board to kind of think about where do we want to go and give her directions for the final edit. So we can
I, I, I think that's a very good idea because many of these changes are driven by applications before the zoning board of adjustment and having Attorney John Drill there to provide insight into why the zoning board may have recommended many of these changes to cut down on their rather busy schedule would, would assist the, the, the planning board. So I think it's a tremendous idea to have a joint meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if, if you all recall, the, the initiative for starting this was a grant from Hundredan County Economic Development where they did provide some funding to try to make, make amendments to the zoning that would make it easier for businesses to start or, you know, change, change, you know, change uses, change, go through site plans, go through the approval process. So that's, you know, where it started. I know it's kind of morphed over time a little bit and you know, there have been a lot of, you know, opportunity to clean up. It's how far do we go with it? But I think a work session is a good place to start because it is, I don't want to say rough, but there's been, you know, it's kind of been opened up to a large group. So there needs to be a way, I think, to manage that input.
Right. Yeah, I, I, I was worried about the chaos of, of getting comments from 10 people or 15 people individually and having to then sift. So
Well, also, I mean, you know, maybe some, and group feedback on which comments
Right.
do we want to go with and what's the direction and the ideas behind? You know, we kind of threw some things out there as these might be ways. That's, it's not set in stone that those are the ways. It's really just It's really just ideas of things that, you know, I've seen from being on, on, on both the planning zoning board that have, that have kind of tripped up applicants, I think.
Okay.
I did meet with the chairman from the Board of Adjustment today, and he did have a couple comments, but, yeah.
Well, well, then maybe we can see if, you know, if, if they're game to join us. I, I think that would be helpful to, to do a joint meeting.
I think so, too.
And I think you could invite them, and if, if they're interested, then they're interested. If not, not, you know, I mean, it's just putting it out there, yeah.
Yeah. All right.
So Jeff, can you reach out to?
Yes, I will reach out tomorrow.
Okay, and then their solicitor as well. So we try and get something that's, yeah, John can come to and Jonathan Drill.
Yeah, great.
That'd be great. I think, I just think, again, doing all this concurrently and then also, you know, what, what John King's trying, trying to do just to keep an ear out if there's other things that come up. So, okay, that's all I had.
That's great, thank you. Jeff, any other comments? Any new comments this evening?
Uh, no, but I did attend the warehousing, um, seminar and provided the PowerPoint to you all. Um, there were some main comments from them that township should be more proactive instead of reactive and for, for there to be a regional approach for maybe municipalities and counties. So there are some, some ways that they suggested with the NJPO, um, office, but as far as it has, as it relates to Raritan Township, it's, it's more of how compromised with the, with the applicants. And that's something that they touch upon if there's already an ordinance in place. How do you deal with the residents and how you deal with the new nuisances that the warehouse may, may have? So, um, those are some of the themes that are throughout the PowerPoint, if you, if you.
Okay, well, thanks for attending that and getting us the information.
Yeah.
Because it's clearly becoming more and more of a topic. Jessica, any other comments from you this evening?
No, nothing further, thank you.
John, sorry, comments?
Uh, yes, um, I think I may have indicated to some of you that, uh, the Supreme Court Justice of New Jersey has indicated that until further notice, there will be no civil or family trials in Hundredan Warren and St. Emmeridge Counties due to the lack of the legislature and the governor appointing judges. And I suppose that means if you deny an application and someone challenges it, they're not going to be heard very quickly.
John, given the quality of the audio this evening, it was the right decision that we, uh, did not allow the meeting to go forward without the court.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm surprised because usually I've, I've had very good audio reception over, over Zoom. So, um, I'm, I'm at a loss as to why it was a little interrupted tonight.
Okay, our next meeting, thank you, John. Our next meeting is February twenty-second. Jeff, have anything on the agenda for that?
That's Flemington Industrial Park.
Okay.
And, uh, it was opened up for the Santana Dharma. And Hundredan Land Trust may come in with a site plan waiver.
All right, thank you. Hey, everybody, thank you, we're adjourned for this evening.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.